I'll call to order the meeting of the planning board of October eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Alphabetical roll call, who's here?
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Kevin Hine here.
Deidre Hobson here.
And Cassandra Thayer, our town planner is with us, and I see that Angela is back out there. In the. I don't know, what do you call it? Zoomosphere, and she's taking notes. All right, so tonight we only have one matter on our agenda, which is a. A continuation of a public hearing on thirty-one South Main Street. Starting a special permit and site plan review under the village bylaw Article eighteen. Uh, we will proceed just the applicant, if we could have just a brief. Uh, overview of what you're doing and what's changed from the application that we dealt with in the, I think it was in the spring or early summer.
Yeah, sure.
And then after that.
So we essentially.
Can you hold on a sec?
Hi, Paul.
Can you hold on just a sec? Can you hold on just a sec?
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, but you're not hearing me apparently. Anyway, then we'll hear from Patrick Brennan, our consultant, then we'll hear from members of the board, and if there's anybody in the public, we'll hear from them. All right, so. Mister Ford, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. We can hear you.
I I had, I thought I was having problems, so, um, yeah, so we, um. We downsized our project a little bit, uh, we had two units previously. Uh, being attached to the end of the building, the back of the building, and now we just have one. Um, for various reasons, they wanted to downsize a little bit, um. However, the one unit we do have is exceeding the fifteen hundred square foot max by about fifteen percent.
Yeah, and the problem with that is when, when we have a hard dimensional limit in the bylaw, exceeding that requires a variance. On the zoning board.
Oh.
So I don't think we can, we can grant that, we can grant up to the max of fifteen hundred, that's it.
Well, one thing that might be related, Tom, I, I, I know a lot about this existing non-conforming, uh, crap that exists between zoning bylaws. Mass general laws and. Um, case law is that they do have an existing twenty-five hundred square foot unit. Which, which could be, you know, uh, that's, that in itself is existing non-conforming, and I wonder if they could, um. Um. Use that. As existing non-conforming status and just saying they're gonna have, create another unit that's. Less in the area than that existing unit. It's possible.
I, I suggested to Carolyn, she could have the night off tonight, so we don't have her legal opinion.
That's a lot of lawyer stuff.
Yeah, so you'll have to have, you'll have to deal with my legal opinion, and I, we're not increasing. The non-conformity of that unit, uh, the, the existing unit or the existing building, we're adding something new. And, and the whole goal of that bylaw and the size limits was to encourage. Uh, units that were more affordable, if not. Forty B affordable, at least more affordable in the marketplace, but I, you know. I've been very simply anytime there's a hard limit. You need a variance to exceed it.
Okay.
So anyway, what else was, what else has changed?
Well, we changed the site, the site plan design, um. Jeff was working on that.
You want to show us that?
Just removing that unit.
Yeah, I can run through some of the other play plan changes.
Yeah, the parking and the drainage and all that other stuff.
Yeah, sure. So. I'll share my plan. Yeah, so I mean, tha- that was the main change, um, cutting it back from two units to one, with the unit being about a little over seventeen hundred square feet. Um, the other changes we made is. Um, this area of existing asphalt in this area will be removed and replaced with a landscaping and impervious walkway. And then the size of the, the driveway expansion area, this is the existing driveway coming off of the parking lot. And the driveway is being expanded to meet the garage. That was scaled back rather significantly, it came all the way out basically to the landscaping over here. And we're also specifying it to be porous, uh, porous asphalt, and we've detailed that. Um. So it ends up being a slight increase in impervious, I. Pat Brennan notes it in his letter, I want to say it's about hundred and seventeen square feet of additional impervious. Um, but we're, we're now putting all the roof runoff into a dry well system, which is on the next sheet. But we basically have a, a roof dry well system underground here where the downspouts will go to. Um, so, you know, pre- pretty minor, um, site plan changes. Uh, to note, you know, the floor area, area ratio on this is now forty-three percent of the allowed, so well below. Um, they have well in excess, in, in excess of the required parking. The lot is fully conforming and the addition complies with all the zoning setbacks.
I, I, I remember looking through things tonight before the meeting, Concom had told us, I think the previous application that. Uh, they thought that in at least an administrative stormwater permit was needed, not one that would require a hearing, so I want you to just double. Double check with Concom, that would be a condition.
Okay, yeah, I was actually told it did not trigger any stormwater permit, but I will double check that, and I'll talk to Charlotte about it too.
Okay.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, anything else that you want to let us know about, or?
No, I think that's it, I'll pass it off, pass it back to you or Pat.
All right, Patrick, uh, if you could just summarize, I saw your letter and you've updated it from your earlier versions, if you could just. Go over the highlights and tell us what you think.
Sure, uh, thank you, Pat Brennan, P G B Engineering. Um. Yeah, so I did review the project, the original project back in May and submitted a letter to you, um, with a number of, um. Issues that I had raised. Um, as Jeff just ran through, they, and, um. Uh, and Paul, they, they did reduce the size of the project, um, pretty significantly. Um, the. Uh, increase in impervious area went from about twenty-three hundred square feet down to hundred and seventeen, which is fairly minimal. Um. The infiltration system that they're proposing for the roof. Um, has the capacity to store, if, if you, um. Spread the water over that hundred and seventeen square feet. Uh, you, that system has the capacity to store over ten inches of water from that, so it's. It's sized basically to contain the hundred year storm. Um, for the increase in impervious area. And that's just storing it, that's without infiltration or anything, so it, it. Size adequately for the roof, certainly. Um. They did address my other issues, you know, one of my bigger concerns. Was the existing driveway along that, um, as you're looking at the plan, the, the. To the right of the addition, um. They, they had parking spaces all the way up to where the decks are. And my concern was with cars trying to back out of there, um, adjacent to the building. A- and, you know, basically running into the building, um, so. That's not an issue anymore, they do have the one parking space. Uh, right there where Jeff's cursor is, and they are showing bollards, um, along the building there to protect it from, from anything, but again, it's not really concerned with one car there anymore. Um, they do show a dedicated turnaround spot, which is just, yep, down in that rectangular area. Um, so they have an area where, um, that, that will not be occupied by a vehicle to be able to turn around, they're showing trash receptacles just. Adjacent to that, um, for the, for the uses that are there. Um, and, um. I, I believe the, you know, the, the big thing here, well, there was two items, obviously, the seventeen hundred seventy-four square foot. Unit that exceeds the, the bylaw, and then, um. The bylaw requires documentation from the historical commission, um. But, you know, that they have received approval from the historical commission, and, um, in the response. Um, Jeff had stated that all required documentation from the historical commission shall be provided, I'm not sure if that's been. Provided yet or not, but that's if it hasn't. Um, if you choose to close the hearing, I would. Recommend that be a condition of approval. And that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, they, they did address. Um, most of my concerns is by downsizing, um, the project, uh, the other thing that I noted in my letter. Was there are four trees, existing trees along the property line that they are proposing to remove, um. And they are replacing those with five native deciduous trees along that same property line.
Okay. All right, thank you, Patrick, uh, Clark, I'll start with you. Ford.
Um, yeah, just, I don't think we talked about this, since there's o- only four regular members of the planning board, if. We were to close the hearing and vote on it tonight, I'm not sure that that's the case. Um, but, uh, the applicant would have to get a unanimous, um. A unanimous vote of this, of the, the mi- members that are here.
That is true. Okay.
Um. And, and in terms of the project, you know, usually, um, uh, reducing units, um. Uh, solve some problems. So I think that's good, it, it, I, um. I, I don't think that we can vote. In an affirmative manner with the, with the one unit that exceeds. The, um. The fifteen hundred square feet. Um, uh. Paul, I don't know, uh, if you have any areas of floor that are less than seven feet. Um, with the R G F A calculation. You, you can, uh, net out, I think the areas that are less than seven feet from the floor, have you script and you've gone through that?
Yeah.
Square foot.
Yeah.
Scripted, saved, and, okay, all right, well. That was one question.
Yeah, I got a lot to make in it, two hundred and twenty-four square feet. Do you have any recommendations on approaching this variance issue, like, is it? Is it approachable? I mean.
No, it isn't.
I don't.
Frankly, I don't think, no, I'll give you my lawyer opinion, it has to be something about, I mean, the, the. This is by state law, not just by our town bylaw, but it has to be something unique about the topography or the geography of the lot, and there isn't anything unique here.
Usually that translates into something like a lot of wetlands, ledge outcropping, you know, um. Uh, something that.
Yeah, or just down the street, just down the street, you have the stream coming across the corner of one property. Uh, you know, that may have dictated some things, um, but, you know, and. And our zoning board is kind of tight with giving out variances, so.
To- to- Tom's right, you, you have to have something unique that's problematic, uh, in a lot of towns, they use the term hardship. Um, in order to, um, and.
I think I've read all that language, it's pretty tough.
Yeah, but that's, that's a ma- this, this, the. The, 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 something about the topography or the geography would have to cause a hardship, it's, it can't be a manufactured hardship just because you want something bigger.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, to, to me, it's, it's defeating the purpose of this bylaw and why we developed this bylaw, which was to develop smaller size. Bold unquote, afford, more affordable. Rental units in the town.
So, I, I, you know, I. In the past year, I, I did a double check and a, a, a Freedom of Information Act, um, discovery question of the zoning board of appeals. And found that there was only one variance that, um, that. That I knew of. That had been granted by the zoning board of appeals, and that was recent down in, uh, in, in January. Of this year for a project on Border Street across from the Old Atlantica, where. Um, the project was in the site, uh, was in the, um. Flood plain, and it, it just absolutely wouldn't work. Without the variance. Um.
I think, what I hear is, I think I'm hearing that it's, it's not really. Realistic to come.
You're not gonna get a variance, and, and we're not, we're not empowered to waive. Um, aspects of the zoning bylaw where, where you would as a forty B project. Where you waive certain aspects or request waivers. Of, um, the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit, this isn't that either, so. I don't. I don't see that we have. The flexibility built in here, but, um, I just wanted to. Um, make a couple of other comments, or.
Okay.
Uh, ask about. Um, last time you ga- came in, um, I think I raised an issue of mixed use and fire ratings and. In, uh, the existing building being, um, one point two to one point three from the property line. Which ordinarily, um, would require like a two hour fire rating unless you have sprinklers. In which case it might be reduced to a one hour, uh, fire rating. Um. And the, you know, the building code aspect of this isn't necessarily, um, critical for. The special permit itself, um, but there's, um, you know, there's an, there's an issue of, of, um. What's permissible under the building code. Um, that, you know, I, I think it's important that you get a handle on, and. Um, I don't know if I suggested. Uh, whether it makes sense for you to, to hire a, a code consultant, there's, there's a bunch of good ones out there. Um, you know, a, 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 a pretty cheap one hour. Uh, fire rating is the, I wrote it down, U L three oh five. Um, that's a pretty flexible one hour rating, but I don't know if you need one or two hours. There, there is some flexibility built into the, um. Uh, international building code. The international existing building code two thousand fifteen. Which this building. The existing building would be under that jurisdiction. And it, um. It doesn't. It, it, it says basically if you're building in addition to a non-conforming to building code. Um, you, you, you don't have to upgrade that existing building. Uh, provided that what you're building doesn't impact, and, and, and I didn't really get into what impact might be. But my concern with, with the project, generally speaking, is, um, those finer details. I would expect that you'd have them figured out. Um, and have a letter from your code consultant that covers those things so that. Um, we can put it to bed and, and not, not, not think about it again, again, there's. There's fire separations between. Uh, business or mercantile and residential, there, and then there's fire ratings required. Because of the distance to the property line.
Yeah. Yeah, Hal had asked, had asked me to get, have a fire alarm company. Do a review, see if we needed fire alarms and such, uh.
Well, you definitely need fire alarms, yeah. Um, but, um.
We were talking about being two units and maybe not, and I don't. But I guess.
Well, yeah, I, I remember this being a bigger issue in the spring. When we talked about it, but.
You definitely, no, there's, there's fire ratings and fire separation, uh.
Sure.
And, and, and the, the matrix of, of that modeling depends on whether you sprinkler or not. Uh, and these are all critical to whether you've got a, um, you know, a, a realistic project or not. Um, so. Um, I don't think you're jumping the gun to make sure that those are squared away and talk to a code consultant to, um, figure out what you have to do. Um, you know, there are limits in, uh, openings, uh. Um, uh, certain distances from a, a property line, you know, it goes from zero to five and from. Five to ten and ten to twenty is sort of different requirements and more flexibility that's built in. Um, I, I mean, other than that, the, the architecture, if you will, the design of it, the solar panels, it. You know, the end, uh, gable where the garage is, it, it, it looks good, it's, it's a well-designed, uh, project. It appears that you have two means of egress out of, out of both units, I didn't really check on the, um. The, the first floor, uh, retail space, but, um, you know, th- those are all the things that. Uh, are a big pain in the ass for, um. Projects like this.
Yeah.
Say, did I just say pain in the ass in a public meeting?
Yes, you do.
Is I, 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 I apologize for.
I think it's.
My crude language.
I think it's acceptable now.
It's accurate, probably, okay.
Sometimes I just use the, the word expletive, uh, for emphasis.
All right, you're all set.
Code reviews, code reviews, fine, um, would you want to see that with, from the planning board perspective, you need to see that, or just down the line?
I, I mean, I'm a registered architect, so I would like to see it as a part of the. Um, a part of the project, it wouldn't hurt to talk to, uh, John Haylen, the building inspector, and then. Either, um, get a review from a code, um, consultant. Um, that confirms what, what you've got as a terms of the actual configuration is, is workable with fire ratings and or sprinklers.
Well, the big one is bringing the old building up to code, which, I mean.
You don't have, you don't have to. No, no, there are exceptions in the I E B C. Uh, two thousand fifteen. For an addition to an existing building where you do not have to upgrade the existing building, but.
Yeah, we are under that assumption, I think, yeah.
Well, you know, y- you gotta have the, it, you know, check the.
Okay.
Check the requisite section, a- again, you know, I. Uh, i- it's not typical for planning board to. Uh, to have these kinds of, um. Uh, questions, but usually, you know, what we see are a big building in the middle of space and the, the fire separations are, are all, you know, adequate, and. Um. So, but for your project to be realistic. This is an absolute requirement.
Okay, it's gonna come up anyway, so.
It, you know, you might as well just deal with it.
Okay.
But I, I don't know if there's a tricky way you could, um, again, this might be design advice, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna only limit my comment. To. Two hundred square feet from, um. And, and getting your unit below, uh, fifteen hundred square feet is, is, is there a way to separate that to some other? Um. I, in some way, I, I, I would look into that. But, but right now, you're, you're exceeding the thing, and I, I don't think it's approvable. I mean. Square feet, that's, that, those are my comment.
Okay.
Maybe we could assign some space to the other unit that's already too big, a non-conforming, I don't know.
I don't know.
You know, then you're, then you're expanding a non, then you're expanding a non-conformity and you're get, you're back to the zoning board for that.
But that would just be a special permit from the, from the zoning board.
Yeah, to make that unit bigger.
But that's doable as opposed to a variance.
Right. But anyway, um, my only. Comment I want to make is that, you know, this, this is a ground floor residential unit. Uh, we do allow those if it's behind a retail, um. Use, which it is, at least from the main street side, so. I, I have no problem under. The bylaw section eighteen. Eighteen dash one B to allow this to be built on the ground floor, and that was my only comment about that, so. Uh, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, I'll be brief, um, I'm not a professional, I would recommend you retain the services of a professional so that when this comes in front of the board. Next time, a lot of these considerations that the board. Should already have in front of us are already made. Um, I think you, you benefit by having some consulting services. Through members of this board that opine on this, but I think you need to go beyond that, retain the services. Of professionals so this can get the wings and fly. Because it can't right now. Um, because you're over the limit. Uh, when this came in front of us in the spring, I thought there was some real attractiveness to some elements of this. And at that point in time, there were things that still needed to be. Flushed out with regard to professional services, um, a lot of the details that would need to be approved. Um, from this board and others, and I would recommend you do that. Before this goes in front of us or other boards wherever you end up, um, so that you've got all your ducks in a row, so to speak. Um, for someone that's not a professional on this, I can just see that there's inadequacies galore on this. Including the one that's front and center that you're over a set limit. So you need to get that figured out before you put this in front of us. Or other boards, and it sounds like based on the temperature and the way the winds are blowing. The expectations, again, variances are very low, so. I would take that to heart, uh, so that you can have a successful, attractive product. Um, an endpoint that you desire, that makes that area. Um, even better than what it is now in, in what is a, you know, a, a key location, a key downtown location. Um, again, from what I saw in the spring, um. I think you had some really nice features and things, and I, you know, I hope that those can be retained, but you're just gonna have to find the way to fit this into the, the square that's been dealt you. So that, you know, you can conform to all the requirements. That's all I have.
Deidre?
I just want to say I appreciate the applicant's effort to. Try and. Add some more. Residential space in the village, I think it's attractive, it's a beautiful building, it has historic co- content. I would love to hear from the historical. Committee, honestly, um, I do agree with our chairman and other members' issue about getting to the zoning board. Obviously, we do exceed the. The, uh, square footage, um, I do understand that the objective is to try and create a unit that is, um. Financially viable in the village, you're trying to attract. Somebody who would love to live in the village, whether it's a family or, um, a couple with enough square footage that they feel like they are. Um, having been somebody who lived in Beacon Hill, um. I would have loved seventeen hundred and seventy-four square feet, but, um. I do understand our. Um, us being bound by what is existing in the law right now for the town and the zoning. Um, but if you can get to zoning and get some. Possibly, I know, I know our chairman says it's gonna be very difficult to get, um. Some grant that allows us to build something a little bigger in there, maybe we think about downsizing, you get to twelve hundred, maybe thirteen hundred square feet, maybe there's a possibility in there. Um, for a young couple, I think that would be great, having lived in that, as a young couple in Beacon Hill, but, um.
I think the, I think the previous unit was, what are they, seven hundred and fourteen hundred something?
We had two, it's, one was, um, right around set the seven fifty and the other one was fourteen ninety-nine, right at the fifteen hundred mark. So we.
I was just, I was curious what, what the existing unit was, so.
Oh, and the, the one that's there now is like twenty, twenty-four.
Okay, so it's, it's big.
It's good, yeah.
Um, but I do, I do commend you, I just, I do understand what we're working within where the planning board's limits are with this, so I do apologize.
The historical commission, or, or, I did meet with them and, and they approved it, and I, I don't know, there must be some paperwork missing.
Okay, so we don't have a letter yet from them, do we, um, Cassandra?
It would have happened a while back, um.
Okay.
Maybe it's missing, I'll, I'll look for it.
Okay, that would be great, and I, I, I just, I guess I feel badly we're sending you back to the drawing board, but I think we just need to figure out. Where we're at before the planning board can make a, a, a better decision about this, I, I, I appreciate the, the building and what you're trying to do down there, but. Um.
Okay, now, aside from the being over two hundred and twenty-four square feet, what are the glaring issues, any can? Code review and that, I, I'm not seeing too much else we need to work on, um.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so, I, I, I mean, your screening, your parking. It, it all looks like it fits in that area, so I don't know about the other board members, but that's my feeling.
Okay.
I think it's good otherwise myself, for those issues. All right, so we're gonna have to continue this, um.
Yeah.
And prior to the next meeting, we need to hear from the historic commission, we need the. Unit downsized or variance granted. Um, your choice. And, um. And we need to have some code data, you know, some data about this code issue from you. Um. Then our next meeting, so, so Cassandra, the first, we're dealing with. Uh, Black Horse Lane, correct?
Uh. Yes, on the first, you were dealing with Black Horse Lane, and then on the fifteenth, you have two special permits, site plan reviews and a large home review. Um, but before you continue it, did you want to open it up to the public?
I don't know, is there anybody out there? I didn't see. If there anybody from the public that wishes to be heard, I see one person there, but, yeah.
Yeah, so I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but Erica Rice is the owner, um.
Yeah, Erica is the owner. Erica is the owner, she was actually gonna live in this one unit addition, um, to retire there, that's why it's big, it's for her.
So, uh, she has had her hand raised, um, Erica, I haven't had a chance to speak up, but, um. I- if you would like to speak, you can become a panelist, I've offered Erica to become a panelist and she's declined, um, so I could do that a third time, um.
She's probably.
And I see someone else has joined in, is, any, anybody from the public wish to be heard, like, there's Erica raising her hand, so if you could promote her.
I, she will be rejoined. I, she will be rejoining.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for your patience. I um, the reason I had my hand up is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I was, I was wondering if I could. Just increase a little bit of the square footage of the existing house. And not try to get a variance, but that question seemed to be answered. Somebody said that that might be a suggestion, if I could get a special, not a variance, but a special permit to.
You'd have to get a special permit to increase, you're increasing a nonconformity, and so they'd have to find under a special permit that it's not substantially. More detrimental to the district. That's the finding the zoning board would have to make. Cause it's, 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 the, 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 the limit is now fifteen hundred square feet, so the existing unit is now nonconforming. And if you're gonna expand the nonconformity, make it bigger than it already is big, too big, then you have to go through the process with the zoning board.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, th- those, those decisions need to be made and those things need to be in place. I mean, we would need to see a decision. Before we would close this hearing, so. Um you know, we can set a date now, but if, if you're going the route of going to the zoning board for one form of relief or the other. Uh we will need to continue it to another night, I'm sure, cause they only, they only meet once a month, so you know, right?
No, but that'll take time. We don't need to set a date now.
Well, we, we unfortunately have.
We, we have to set a date to continue this hearing, we just.
Although we can continue again uh at that date if you're not ready, so um. You know, whatever the next meeting is after the fifteenth, does that make sense to continue to? And then um if, if that's uh not, um if that doesn't work, let us know.
Okay.
What's, what's that meeting, uh Cassandra?
December sixth.
Okay, we have anything else on at that time?
Not as of yet.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to December twenty.
No, December six.
December sixth.
I was gonna say December twenty-fourth.
No, don't do that.
They had that on my brain, um December sixth.
At six thirty. Second. All right, um any further discussion of that from anyone? All right, alphabetical, all in favor? Tom Kelly and I.
Kevin High and I.
Deidre? She disappear?
Deidre Hobbs and I, sorry, keep hitting the wrong button.
All right, then uh we'll continue this to the sixth uh at six thirty, and again, historical commission. Decision on this unit size and information about the code.
And, and our, our missing planning board member um can um uh listen to this hearing and still be eligible to vote. If we're, if we're there.
Yeah, she can. She can, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Patrick, thank you. So um.
Yep, thank you, good night.
All right, good night, thanks. Um I don't believe we have any minutes to discuss.
No, do you want me to make a motion to adjourn?
No, I just, so if you, if you didn't see the update in the agenda, we are going to, on the first, have an executive session at six o'clock. To discuss issues related to Black Horse Lane that are in litigation. Uh before the hearing on Black Horse Lane, so there's two separate uh logins for that, for the executive session, I believe Cassandra's distributed them. So we'll see on the first at six o'clock and uh. Otherwise, we are off next week, although next week I will be presenting the. Zoning amendments to the advisory committee, so.
Tom, what, I didn't see any comments from ZBA on uh, on the zoning changes.
Yeah, I don't, you know what, because they hadn't, when we last met with them for them to vote, they hadn't seen the text in enough time. Uh Cassandra, I don't know when they're meeting or if they've taken a vote yet.
Uh I haven't heard that they've taken a vote. Um I don't think they've met since the last time that you met.
Yeah, I, I imagine they're gonna do it at their first meeting in November, which is before town meeting in that first week.
But I think their, I, I think their next meeting is the fourteenth of November. Their next scheduled meeting is the fourteenth of November.
Yeah, I think.
I have a project on your agenda, and isn't that the day after town meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and there's only, by the way, the zoning bylaw articles have been made, the last two on the agenda, and there's. Possibility, depending on how many people empty the room after the other votes, that uh we might have to go to Tuesday night. So, we'll see, but we'll see.
Ple- a pleasure, um but it's not a requirement for the zoning board of appeals to.
No, it's, it's not, and they, and if they, if they.
But.
Yeah, if they schedule themselves for the night of town meeting, they can, they can, you know, quorum that, you know, make, have a little meeting. And, and make a decision on their feet at the, on the floor of town meeting, so.
That's.
No. No, but.
Zoning bylaws.
No, and we only had three selectmen vote, it was three zero votes, but they're probably going to that night. You know, convene hopefully and tell us their five zero votes, so.
But the, the warrant's done, right? It's.
The warrant is gone to print, I think, the other day, so.
Whatever, whatever the planning board vote was is gonna be important as well as the selectmen.
And I think, I think only our vote and the selectman's three zero vote probably made it to print.
That's all that really matters.
Advisory matters to some people, so. We'll, we'll have theirs, we'll have theirs wrapped up.
I mean, the zoning changes isn't really their, the advisories Bailey Wick either, but then vote on and review everything, right?
All right, don't, don't get me going about advisory.
No, no, not me.
And just so you know, all, all of you, I may or may not be at the first, it depends on, I'm waiting to hear from a doctor about. Wonderful injection, so anyway, um I may be there, I may not, so I apologize. Hopefully you have a quorum, Tom.
Yeah, I, I, well, you know.
Is Amy gonna be in town?
Now, he, here's, here's the issue with that, um Clark has missed two meetings and he can't. He can't rehabilitate himself when he's missed two, um so we will need Amy and Kevin and myself to be sure to be there.
Okay, somebody let me know if I'm, if I can at least, after an injection, uh if I can be on. You know, without a video, I'll, I'll be there to vote.
Your health first, and, and I mean, if we do not close the hearing that night for whatever reason, you can listen to the tape and you can still vote. Cause you've only missed one, so.
Okay, okay.
Art Clark can participate in the executive session, but you can't participate in the vote on the permits. And hello there.
Hello, hello Lucy.
Sorry, you're gonna say hi Lucy Goose?
All right, so um we have no minutes to uh approve tonight, I take it? No, Angela, welcome back to doing those and um. Can Lucy, on behalf of Clark, make a motion to adjourn?
Can you make a motion, Lucy, to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll make it formal, a motion to adjourn, somebody second please.
Aye, second.
Parker or I?
Tom Kelly and I.
Kevin High and I.
Deidre Hobbs and I.
All right, thank you all, thank you Cassandra, thank you Angela.
Cassandra. Thank you.
All right.
Hey, well, thanks everyone, bye.